Hello.
Go stand right up front.
Warren, is that your band? Is that your band? Okay, I had it over here, but I was...
Oh, yeah. Did you...
Well, when I called me, I was, we were coming over. Coming to Ross, will they reimburse me? I never had to do with that before.
I don't know. Yes, we can't get them over 3.
For $5.
Yeah.
Still. Oh, was it for $5?
No, 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 it was $5.
Oh, okay.
But I believe two hours was...
That's where we part, so. I know. I'm like, since we're in a state bar, we might maybe move it after two hours. If we're still going on, probably. Unless we've got some attorney or a judge that would get us off. Our company's here. We've got staff here. Grab another chair. How many staff? I already kind of checked, and I still didn't know how many. But there's one for another chair, for sure. So I could bring the court reporter's chair over or this other place. Oh, really? No. No, you've probably been to this since, as OPC. Because we just started doing this since COVID ever. Having, they've set it up this way. Otherwise, we'd have to be standing up front. Yeah, next to it. But there was some problems, so that was all done.
Hello. Thank you for showing up today. My name's John Clark. I am a regulatory law judge with the Missouri Public Service Commission. This is an official Public Service Commission local public hearing concerning Amarin's, what we call a general rate case. The local public hearing is in two parts. The first part is a question and answer session, and that is more of an informal part. And some of the parties will make a short presentation. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions regarding this general rate case. The second, and I will not be present for the, nor will the commissioners be present for the question and answer portion. And that's because things might be said which we're not supposed to hear yet. The second part, the formal part, is the part where we take public comment. It's my understanding that during the question and answer session, sometimes some great comments are made. Those comments generally do not find their way back to the commission. So if you have comments about this rate case, I would encourage you to hold those for the second part, where we'll have the court reporter taking that down and it becomes part of the record of the case. And during the first part, the informal part, if you have questions for the company, Amarin Missouri, or for the staff of the commission, or for the office of the public counsel, I would encourage you to ask those. And with that in mind, I'm going to step out, and they can start the question and answer portion.
Thank you, Judge, for the introduction. My name is Debbie Quick, and I'm a member of the Public Service Commission staff, and I will facilitate the question and answer session. So this first part of the question, the first part of the hearing is the question and answer session. It is when you will be able to ask your questions of the staff, Office of Public Counsel, or the company about the case, or if you have any other issues that you'd like to bring to Amarin's attention, or the staff's attention, or OPC's attention. This is your time to do it. That second part is just the comments section. So if you make a comment in this first part, the commissioners won't hear that part. So we do want to make sure that you reserve those for the second part. It's very, very important for you to have those comments on the record in the case file, because the commissioners will review the case file to make their decisions. Okay? Again, the judge mentioned the two parts. The first part's the informal session, question and answer. I'll just ask you to raise your hand. You can come up to the microphone and ask your question, and the representatives will answer. And then we'll proceed to the second part when the questions, most, the questions have been answered. I do want to bring to your attention a couple of items that were at the front table when you arrived. There is this two-page stapled sheet. That is the information sheet. It's got all the information regarding this case. This case, this, this sheet also has the electronic filing information, information on how to access the case file. So if you'd like to access it, the case number's at the top of the sheet, and there's information on how to access our electronic filing system. There's also information on, I think, the third page regarding our consumer services unit. So if you have any problems accessing the information from the website, you can call that number, and they can walk you through how to access the case. But for instance, the testimony or the comments made in today's hearing, those will be part of that case file. So you'd be able to see that, too, and then follow the case and see where things are going. Let me see. Other than that, when you sign, when you came in, you had the opportunity to sign up to testify or to make your statement on the record. If you signed up, and when the judge starts the second part, you decide you don't want to speak, he'll call your name. He'll take them in the order that you signed up. And you can decline. And if you didn't sign up, but you decide you want to make a statement, he will open it up at the end, after he's gone through the list. And then anybody who's not signed up and would like to make a comment will have the opportunity to do so. Okay? So I think at this part, we'll go ahead and start with the questions. Does anyone have a question? Just raise your hand, and I'll call. And again, you'll come up to the microphone. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we ask questions, let me introduce. I'm sorry. Let's introduce the, the representatives. I've got a representative from Public Service Commission staff. Office of Public Counsel, which is the consumer advocate. And then Amarin Missouri.
Yeah, I'm not going to interrupt you. You've come up to testify. I'll give my little, my, my little discussion after you testify, if you ask your question.
Yep, thanks so much. Since this is about economics, I just have a basic question. What, what is the profit rate? What is Amarin's average profit rate? What has the profit rate been the last few years? And does the public service process and their assessment of rates and procedures guarantee or try to assure, not actually guarantee, a certain rate of profit for Amarin? Thank you.
Okay. I understood some people, you didn't hear the question. Let me see if I can, you tell me if I did it right, okay? It was a question on our profit level. What's it been? Is it guaranteed through the process? Was that, was that a fair summary? Okay, yeah. The question was, is, is, if there isn't a guarantee of an ROE, is there some sort of a provision in rates that provides some minimum level? Or, or gives some level of protections? Is that fair? Okay, very good. Okay. Nathan, is that kind of what you heard, too?
I don't know that I've heard of ROE.
Okay, okay. Return on equity, or profit level. It's a return, it's a return. So we've requested 10.2% in this case. I understand some of the other parties have filed anywhere from 9.59 to 9.25 return on equity. And so that's one of the issues in the case, that the different parties offer positions on, and then the commission can decide if they consider that to be appropriate or not. Okay? Can I do, go to my guarantee, do my little piece now? Okay, very good.
I'm sorry. I kind of went out of order there.
No, no, it's okay. Nathan, go ahead. Excellent, thank you. So, no, there's not a guaranteed return on equity. There's not like an adjustment mechanism if it's off. Right now, it's lower. When we, if we get above a certain level, actually, the other parties can file a complaint case against us to lower rates. Once we get out of far, out of, or out of the ability, given increases in cost or whatever, to hit, hit some reasonable level within that range, we'll quite often end up being forced into filing an electric rate review like we have now. So there are, plus, go ahead. Do you have something, Nathan?
We may have to agree to disagree, but Amarin Missouri does have a fuel adjustment charge. And the reason it has that is to help maintain its profit margin. And what the fuel adjustment charge is a flow-through of differences in the projected cost for Amarin Missouri to supply electricity to its customers. And when I say that, it acquires electricity either by generating it or purchasing it on the market. And that's a cost that essentially gets passed through to customers. There is a little bit of a, a difference, like 5%, but more or less, it's a pass-through. And that does help to, the purpose of it is to help assure the utility does get a certain return on its investment. It's not a guarantee, though. There are other factors that come into play.
We would agree to disagree, because I would say the FAC doesn't marked up for any profit margins. You know, it's, it's purely a cost pass-through, minus that plus or minus 5%.
But it's to help maintain that profit rate. And it's expressing the statute for that.
Right, but it doesn't increase, include a profit margin like, like capital investments do. So you see, you see the difference. There's a, this is what the rate review process is about. We may not see things the same way. Yes. Okay. May I go on now? Okay, very quick. Thank you very much for coming to this public hearing. My name is Warren Wood. I'm Amarin Missouri's Regulatory Vice President. I'm joined by Steve Wills, Director of Regulatory Affairs. When you came in, you may have noticed the table out on, as you came in, on your left, Amarin Missouri table with people and computers there. If you have any billing issues, any reliability issues, any questions on energy assistance or financial assistance for bills, I would encourage you to visit the people at the table out there. They can bring up your account information, and they are here to help with any of those kind of issues. So we did file a rate review request with the Missouri Public Service Commission in August of last year to request a change in electric rates in July of this year, reflecting major system upgrades for reliability, resiliency, and investments in cleaner energy for our transition there. You know, we, we're hardening the grid, we're replacing old power lines, strengthening poles, upgrading substations, we're installing smarter technology, including outage detection and restoration switches, and smart meters, allowing customers to take advantage of a number of new rate options. These investments are helping with reliability. Where we've made these upgrades, we're seeing up to 40% improvement in reliability. You know, this, these investments have demonstrated their value several times recently. Winter Storm Yuri last February, during the extreme heat of last summer, and most reasons, recently with Winter Storm Elliott just last December. You know, in fact, right here in St. Charles, we had an outage this morning. About 1,100 customers were knocked out by a big limb falling on a line, knocking it out. One of the smart switches installed under this equipment quickly detected that, rerouted power, and 1,000 of those customers out of 1,100 were back in quickly. And we got the rest of them back in by 10:30 this morning, but getting that first 1,000, fixing that smart switch was very helpful. So if you want to have more information online about the rate review, about the, the different parts of the case, we have that on our, on our website, amarinmissouri.com/investinginmissouri. Now, all that said, we understand there's no good time to talk about adjusting electric rates. And we are sensitive. Our customers are working through difficult economic circumstances. And as part of that, we're working to keep our rates as low as possible. Of the last three rate reviews, the last, of two of those three were rate reductions. This one is unfortunately a rate increase. You know, we are, as we work to keep our rates down, we've had, you know, right now, our electric rates are more than 20% below the national average, almost 20% below the Midwest average, and the lowest of the investor in utilities in the state of Missouri. Now, finally, as we work, as our communities work through this situation, this economic situation, we're also committed to helping customers who are struggling with their bills. You know, it hasn't always been the case in February here, but I can say money and support remain available. And we have some people here who can help connect you to those programs. Thanks to expanded eligibility for these programs, thanks to additional federal money, new partnerships that are out there in the community to help those who are struggling, we have an unprecedented amount of energy assistance available and programs available. So if you need assistance, please call us, 800-552-7583, or go to amarinmissouri.com/energyassistance. And all that information is also available out on the table, and I have a flyer up here with additional information as well. Thank you very much for joining the hearing again, and I welcome your questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If you'd like to just raise your hand, go ahead. You can just come up to the microphone here. Again, we've had a couple of people arrive late. This is the question and answer session. This is for you to ask any questions you may have over the representatives who are here. The second part of the hearing is for the on the record.
But that, I don't know what small, general phase is, and then it says another small, general, one phase. And I got two charges. What's, what's that mean? It says base phase and electric phase, and I'm charged twice.
Are you looking at an electric bill?
Yeah.
Steve, can you take a look at this? Steve, maybe you can be helpful here.
Yes, I don't know what this is when I, when I look at it. Yeah.
One-phase service is the nature of the service. So it, there's, there's lines that deliver what we call one-phase power. It's really an electrical engineering concept. But so that, that base energy charge is that the first, there, there, the first kilowatt-hours that you use, the first amount of electricity you use in any given month, are at one, one set price. And then as you get over a certain threshold, it's, it's a lower price. So the two different line items are the, the kilowatt-hours that are priced at the, we call it the, the first block rate, but it's, it's the, the price that, that everyone pays for the first so many kilowatt-hours. But as you get over that threshold, you get a lower price, the more that you use. And so the second line item is, both, both of those reflect your usage, but one of them is priced at a lower rate, because the more you use, the rate starts to go down.
Well, and then the other one is, I was just looking at my electric bill, just listening with the conversation that was going on up here. And I, when I called in about the new electric stuff he was putting in, I said, well, there's going to be a charge. Well, she said, no, but that's not true, because it says energy-efficient investment charge. So they charged me $10 and something, but they told me there was no charge on that part, which, so it surprised me. And then there wasn't a fuel adjustment charge I also got. And you do, you put that together, and then you put your other electric together. I mean, it gets high, but I was, it just surprised me in the conversation that was going on back here than what I was looking at. But...
Want to talk about the E, energy investment, the energy efficiency investment charge?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that? I think that, I think that one down went to the week down recently.
Yeah, it, it did start in February 1st. That were, so that charge, irrespective of whether you use our program, that's, that's how the costs of the energy efficiency programs are reflected to, to customers. But those programs are available to customers, and it sounds like that might be what you did. Were you participating in it? If you took advantage of, of an energy efficient measure, you're not being charged for that. There's just, basically, the, the energy efficiency program itself is, has a rate associated with it, that that's how that program is paid for?
No, so the, the rider EEIC is developed pursuant to what's called the company's MEA plan, which is authorized by statute, and it contains three components. That's, that's what we're headed to. So it's the Missouri Energy Efficiency Investment Act. It has three components. The first component is that that charge recovers the cost of the materials the company has used or has, has paid for their contractors to use to help with energy efficiency. So for example, weather stripping, advanced light bulbs, that sort of thing. Then there's also a component for the energy that was not sold to those particular customers because of their energy efficiency measure installation. And then there's also a component for the profit the company will not be able to earn in the future, because less capacity will be needed because of those energy savings. And that, that is set out by statute. Those are set up in what are called MEA plans. Those are done about every four years. They're, they're supposed to be three years, but they often get, get rolled over. And, and there's a, they, they're very intricate. That, that in and of itself is not part of this rate case. It is related to a lot of things in this rate case, but, but that is handled through a separate process.
Going forward, I would say that every month, or?
Yes, the, the rider EEIC is charged to all customers, except for certain customers who are authorized by statute to opt out. Those tend to be large commercial and industrial customers who are able to opt out.
And you asked what MEA was. It's the Missouri Energy Efficiency Investment Act. It was a law that was passed several years ago, largely to support more aggressive utilization of energy efficiency programs. It is, sorry. Oh, Pat?
So this is the interesting part in being part of a discussion.
Yes.
So I wouldn't have thought of what she was asking, but it brought up some other questions about what was the thinking, both on the part of our, our state people and on Amarin's, to tier things like that, to sort of disincentivize not using as much energy if you are a monopoly utility with incentives, both by the federal government and hopefully the state government, to move to clean energy? So for example, the first 750 kilowatts that you use is at a much higher rate than the next. So if you're a large consumer of energy, you're paying less per kilowatt-hour. So what, what went into that thinking to actually penalize the poor, the elderly, the people trying to conserve energy, people moving to clean energy, trying to make some of their own energy? Like myself, I have solar panels. So can you answer that, please?
Excellent question, and I'm going to bring Steve up, because this is, I understand these rates are absolutely not designed to penalize anybody. But they're, well, they're designed to put cost to the customers to the level they're causing cost on the system. It's called a class cost of service.
Right.
If I could, we'll talk...
But you're unfortunate to be the sole provider of energy in this area, and there are benefits to that. And it, it addresses the issue about how much profit should you make as a company that's a monopoly in this state? I can't go out like bread and buy my energy from someone else. And I'm not trying to be combative. I'm just trying to be truthful today. And we tend to kind of gloss over these things and act like it's normal to have a million different equations to figure out what the little old lady in Union will pay for her electricity. But I'd like to know honestly, in public, how do you figure out these things, and why are you prioritizing these things?
About why we have tiered rates as part of cost of service, how those rates are set. Different, by the way, staff and all public counsel, other parties then, all have positions on this often as well.
Right. Right, and the public does, too, gratefully.
Got it.
Right, and so, and so this process that the, the commission is, is undertaking is because, you, you mentioned that we're a monopoly. That's why the, the commission has the authority to review this and make sure that what we're doing is treating people just and reasonably. So the, the rationale for the, the charge structures really gets into kind of economic theory a little bit. And so I don't want to, you know, I'll try to keep it pretty high level. But, so we have, we don't have that declining block rate that you talked about in the summer. And the reason is, is the summer is when the highest demand is, right? So it's the highest time periods for, for how, the cost of us providing service, because there's so much demand. We need to have more plants and more capacity available. In the winter, or in the, in the fall, winter, loads, you know, customer usage is lower than it is in the summer. So there's, there's what we call, you know, there's generally, usually excess capacity, there's spare capacity. And so incremental usage then isn't driving higher costs as much. So that, that cost reality is reflected in a lower rate as you use more, because there's excess, essentially excess capacity that's available to provide that service at a lower cost. That's, and again, I'm trying not to be too technical, but there is a, there's a whole study that both, you know, the staff of the commission and, and the company perform to do some economic analysis, to figure out what is the cost of providing service in different seasons and time periods that informs all of that structure.
And that's given your current structure, your current capacity, and how you create energy.
Yeah, it looks at our system and our costs and all that, right?
Is there a bit of forward thinking to be more efficient in how you produce energy?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that you'll see is we have some new optional rates that are, we call time-of-use rates, or on-peak-off-peak rates.
Right, 30 cents per kilowatt-hour, yeah. Or some times of the year and certain times of day.
Right, and the, but the folks who are on those rates are saving significant, most of them are saving, you know, saving money on them, because 85% of the hours of the month are at a much lower rate. And all it does is it, it, so when you're said forward thinking, what we're trying to do is provide the right, the right pricing, so that people will use power when it's cheaper and not use it when it's more expensive. And that, you know, over the long run, will save everybody money if we don't drive up those costs that are happening when the system is, is fully loaded and there's a lot of usage going on. So what that's trying to do is kind of get folks to use power at, at cheaper times to save money for everyone, really, in the long run. So those rates, I, I think are intended to be forward-thinking in, in terms of reducing the cost of the system over time.
I could keep talking, but the world has changed. We're now, many of us working from home, we're in our homes heating and cooling during those periods of time that traditionally were low usage by residents. So I'll just add that, and we can stop. But thank you for trying to answer all those.
The last, I would, because we do recognize that, and that's partly why those rates are optional, so that people don't have to do it. But I'll also say, is, is even from, you know, during COVID, I was working from home, and I was on one of those rates. And just some simple changes, actually, I still saved money, even though I was at home all day. There are, I mean, and you may not want to do those things, and so you don't have to choose one of those rates, but if someone is motivated to try to save money, the, the opportunity is really there.
We can wrap this up by saying that you should provide more weatherization money, pass-through money from the federal legislation that we passed that help low-income people and rural, low-income people to make those upgrades to their homes, so they can save money.
Right. I, I don't know whether you're signed up to testify, but, but this is in fact an issue in the case for the commission to decide, is not only how much money does Amarin recover overall, but from which customer groups and through what charges. So I would encourage you, if you would like to present your comments to the commission, encourage anyone who wants to present your comments.
Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Good questions, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on her, our gentleman's comment about excess capacity. I find it quite interesting that Amarin itself is using that to do Bitcoin mining with trailers and trailers of PCs. To me, that sounds a little, you know, funny, dishy, whatever. I mean, you know, so you got excess capacity. Why are you burning it on PCs, looking for money out there?
Excellent question. First of all, let me note, that was a small pilot project. It's, it's, it's no longer been in operation for some period of time now. But I would tell you what its objective was. When we have generation plants that are operational and we, sometimes the weather gets mild, and we have the ability to generate electricity and sell it into the market, when we do that, one of the things we do with the revenues from those is we flow them back to customers to reduce fuel costs through what's, it's an off-system sales. And the return on those off-system sales then goes back to customers to reduce fuel costs. So why would we be interested in bit mining? Well... Well, we had excess power. We had a site right next to our plant. And there was an interest in a pilot program to see, hey, um.
Does it make sense?
Yeah, is there an opportunity to do something here? One, two, you know, is there a mechanism to run the plant cycle instead of cycling a big plant down, which has costs associated with it? Maybe keep it running, but run a Bitcoin instead, sort of some demand systems to help the generation unit operate better. And if you got a revenue from that stream, could it be a better revenue stream than off system sales? In the end, there were groups that objected to it, much as you have, and it was it was abandoned.
Well, I was just personally, I was would be curious as to find out or to learn how much you actually found out there.
There was some opportunities out there. And in fact, as soon as we were leaving it, we were getting calls from other utilities saying, hey, what about this? And since then, there's been objections internally, you know, within some of the parties. So it's not, it's not in operation anymore. It was abandoned.
All right. My first of two questions is, we are constantly being bombarded by advertising from AMRIN about their new composite poles and how it's supposed to help reliability. Well, I for one, every time I see a pole being replaced, it's the old creosote wood. And I'm just curious as to where these new composite poles are being put and why aren't they, if they're if they're so good, why are they not the standard de facto right now?
One of the operations guys want to talk a little bit about the composite poles versus the traditional wood poles? I can speak as an engineer, but I'm not the pole guy. So I I have some here you want to take a mic here.
Sure. So so I I'm Randy Hunt. I'm the supervising engineer. I'm out of Wentzville. And most of the time, because of cost, we're very judicious about where the composite poles go. There's a there's an upcharge for those composite poles. So and and oftentimes where we put them is dependent on tensions in the lines and things like that. If there's high tensions, you know, we can actually install those composite poles without encumbering a a landowner with anchoring and things like that.
So and I understand that, but being constantly bombarded by this particular bit piece of advertising, I think it's it's completely out of context for how you're using it. And then I don't blame you for, you know, your reasons. But I don't think it rates such high, high advertising yield to the general public.
Yeah, without seeing the advertisement, I I don't know, but the thought behind the composite, that's simply the thought, you know, that it's put up.
Every TV ad features that. And, you know, your bills constantly are are stating that. And there's a lot of mailings that go out, you know, also featuring that.
Good question. What you had another one?
Yeah, one last one. Are there any incentives today in the regulations for you to reduce your costs or or, you know, minimize your costs versus being guaranteed a percentage return on your 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 core costs?
Well, we're not guaranteed a return on that return equity. It's set on our rates, but we're not guaranteed it. With there are other areas of cost outside of the fuel that go up where you're left, we we don't have.
But basically, your return, you're guaranteed a return on your base operating cost. And it's, I don't see any incentives for you to try to minimize or reduce those. So it's it's the old classic example of spend $10 and get 15% return or spend $100 and get 15% return. So I I just would like to know if there's any incentives in place now.
Well, I we'll agree to disagree on the first part on the guarantee. But regarding incentives to reduce costs, we certainly have interest in reducing costs where we can. Where we get reductions in fuel costs, for instance, there's the 5% if we can get numbers down. So there are incentives there. And then in terms of keeping costs down, one of the things that's important for our company and our communities is bringing new businesses in so we get more load, so we can reduce the cost and bring the rates down from what they'd be otherwise. And so we have some economic development incentives that have been very successful, actually bringing businesses into this into the state and putting people to work and provide additional load on the system, reduce our cost per customer. And then, you know, as put all together, those have been very successful. It's one of the reasons our rates are more than 20% below the national, almost 20%.
And I will not stand here and disagree that.
And lowest the investor in utilities. That's important to us because we see that as a vital competitive issue if we want to be able to attract businesses to the region.
All right, last question.
Certainly.
From your perspective, what what are the benefits of these new smart meters? And and don't regurgitate the advertising, please.
Okay, okay.
Because just to put it in context, I'm a techno guy.
Yep.
So I I embraced it. But I have, I also have previously installed an electrical monitoring system that gives me heads and heads and shoulders above what your smart meter so far has taken months to provide to me.
Yeah.
And it 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 concerns me that the opportunity is there, but I'm not sure that you're taking advantage of it.
That's an excellent thing, you know, maybe Steve, because Steve is, Steve will is, he may, he will, he'll hit the part on the value in terms of new bells and whistles that are coming out with those smart meters.
And I understand.
But I'll start with the the straight to you, what do I see the benefits? Well, we had 20 plus year old metering technology out there. It was end of life, okay? We had a lot of equipment out there.
It wasn't broke, was it?
Uh, what you couldn't, you were quickly running out of the ability to fix it and replace pieces. It's it's old. And Mr. Luth back here is the man who lives and breathes this issue. Is that fair? Old stuff, it had to go. It was, it was going to.
In my corporate experience, there's times when stuff needs to be replaced.
Yeah, yeah.
But what was touted as benefits and and I understand the wind wheels windshield dispatch time for technicians to disconnect and reconnect and to isolate outages. I'm I, you know, I'm right there with you. But beyond that.
So we were at a point that we that technology was no longer maintenanceable. You're quickly going to run out of your ability to to deal with problems with that metering system. And then you look at the new technology out there with the ability for two way communications with customers. It gives us the ability, if somebody has an outage on their system, that metering equipment gives us much better information on exactly where the outage is to fix it quicker.
And I don't disagree with you on that.
And the ability to two way communicate with that meter, if somebody's moving, relocating from one place to another, we can do that without having to dispatch a truck to do that. And then you have, if you're able to do this much more timely information with the meters, you're able to start talking about time of use rates, things where in the past, we've always developed a rate, you use it, you pay for it based on how much you use. Now there's an opportunity to work with customers and say, hey, if you can do something to maybe move some of your load outside of this peak period of the day, you can bring down our cost and we can flow that reduction back to you. So it's more of a two way communication.
And I understand that, but talking to me or talking to the majority of your customers or the feedback I'm seeing on social media, the majority of your customers think it's all bullshit, hogwash. And and it's difficult to try to to convince them otherwise, but personally speaking, I've had a new meter in, smart meter in for three to four months. And just with my latest bill, I was given some alternative rates. And I'll tell you what, I've been trying my best to help you guys and them lower my costs.
Thank you. And and you're going to see more, there's actually some of that likely part of this case. Sarah would confirm that, yes. And Steve is, but to your point, additional opportunities for customers to do things to shift their usage and better manage their bill to bring down cost.
But what I saw in this latest information was to shift my usage beyond 10:00 PM at night. Now, when this all started, when the talk of this was all started, it was 7:00 PM. It was two to seven was your peak period. Now it has greatly expanded from my perspective.
Steve is the guy who's working this time of use piece in particular. You bring a really good question.
Yeah, I think the the rate you're talking about that has the 10:00 PM is is one of the rate options, but there is still one that has a three to seven. It's only a four hour window that has a higher price. And then, so what I've said with that one is 85% of the hours out of all of the month are at substantially reduced rates. And it's really just that four hours, so three to seven still exists. That's still.
But I didn't see that on this latest go around.
Okay, if, I'm not sure which which piece that you've you've seen there, but there are options. If you if you look online, you'd see all the rate options there. I'm not sure exactly which which communication.
Some more of my feedback is I've tried to use your online systems. And first and foremost, there's too damn many of them. And they don't interact or intercommunicate. So when I find out over here, I have to go back over here to see if I can do anything about it. And as far as I'm concerned, I want one dashboard that shows me what I'm using it, where I'm using it, and here's my options. So if anything, you know, and I might come up in the second part and say, you need to improve your IT support.
Very fair comment. Thank you. Thank you. Brief feed that one, because I'm, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Hi. I was reading this and I was trying to understand all of it. So you are looking to increase $316 million per year?
$316 million revenue requirement per year, yes.
And I did get, what did, how many exactly residential customers are in this area? On your on your website, it was like 2.4 million customers, but how many residential customers are you talking here?
About, okay, about a million 80,000.
So, okay.
And that's, those are customer meters. There's people per household. It's a significantly bigger number of total people, but those are the number of meters, I believe.
So 1.8 million.
One million eight hundred, or 80,000, 1 million and 80,000.
1.08, okay. So that's residential, that'll be affected by this. Of those 1.8 million, I mean, we've had the smart meters in for a while and and you've been like four or six months now that you've been sending out the flyers about the super savers and the different things. What percentages of those customers are into broken down into each of those plans?
Steve, do you know those percent? He's closest to the.
Approximately.
Approximately. So, oh, you need me to give him the mic, don't you? Okay.
And and again, you know, those communications are.
Just 5%.
Yes, there's about 2,100 customers at this point that have opted into one of those more advanced rates. Now, there is one of the time of use rates that has a, you might have noticed it, that has a very small peak versus off. We have almost a half a million customers on that rate. But as far as the ones with the large differentials that that have the, you know, short windows, there's about 2,100 customers right now.
Okay, so say that again. So the the really, that really ultimate savers one is probably one or 2% maybe.
It's under, it's under a percent.
Under a percent.
So far, but these are relatively new, right?
Okay, right, people are still figuring it out. So what I was trying, what I was trying to figure out is you're trying to raise the rate $4, $4 in it's, is it every three months or or every month, per month? Oh, right, right, right. No, I get it. I, that's why I was saying, what's the percentage? So if you've got, we'll say 80%, am I being generous, or 85% of the people will be an anytime user, evening, morning savers and overnight savers, 80?
So far, much, yeah, higher than that.
So 80% of your customers of that 1 million, so 800,000 people, will be paying $4 more per month. So I was just trying to do the math here.
Actually, before you do the math, can I, because that $4 a month increase in the fixed charge you're talking about is accompanied by a commensurate reduction in the per kilowatt hour charge. So the bills don't go up by $4 a month. There's a net, there's an offset.
I was trying to figure, yeah.
Yeah, it's shifting.
You got to that.
It's shifting some of the.
Percentage per month when you're doing a, okay.
Yeah, so some of the bill moves from a from a variable and under that proposal, from a variable charge to a fixed charge, but it it doesn't increase the overall bill. It's so basically, it would, you know, every customer, the impact on them would be based on their own usage and how much less that the variable charge was. So because I think it looked like, I think you were going to do the $4 times the.
Yeah, I was going to do four times a million. I'm like, that's 4 million right there.
If that proposal is accepted by the commission, the variable rate will be reduced by a commensurate amount, just to to change the balance of which type of charge is what is, you know, creating the the bill, so to speak.
Okay. That that's, okay, thank you. That's that's the basic question. It says it's going to retail customers. It says retail in one spot and other spot, it says residential. Is any of this, where do the business customers fit in here? Why, what percentage, what percentage of the business is residential? What percentage is business? And are you, are you trying to, are you pushing an increase to businesses or just to resident, residents?
The change in rates would go out, there, I mean, there's a change in rates proposed for all classes.
Okay.
So residential, commercial, industrial, all the different classes have increases in rates associated with this case.
Okay.
Okay, and the rate design is, you know, in the, in the end, there'll be debates between the different parties in the case, how much different classes should pay of that total. You know, more often than not, the changes have been relatively equal across classes. But in some cases, there have been groups that had somewhat different changes based on what it costs to serve them from a cost of service study.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see if I, you've got, let me see if you've got my questions all answered here. I just lost them.
I'll be available here too, if you want, if you have some additional questions to come up.
Okay, that was, that was, oh, here. You, of this 316 million, you said 40, 40 million, 12%, almost 13% is due to increases in Missouri fuel and purchase power. So what about the other 88%? What's that for? And and why, when you say increases, is that because you're not producing enough?
I'm not sure what you're looking at in terms of the 40% increases. Oh, it's a fuel adjustment charge, this go, okay. Well, that's, this, this is a, so it's a little confusing. There's the base rates.
A lot of this is confusing and it's been hard for the average person to tease out the information. It's really hard to understand what what you're asking, what you're really using it for when there's not.
So let me, this one I'll clarify is the base rates. This is, you know, this doesn't include fuel. It doesn't include the energy efficiency investment charge. Those are separate items.
Right.
The FAC one, it did go up and there were, it was, you know, some of it was increases in fuel and purchase power cost to serve load during this very hot last summer, increases in natural gas prices and reduction of output from coal fired power plants. Some of those things were driving the increase, driving that cost in the fuel adjustment charge higher. Okay, but that's separate from base rates, which is what this rate review is about. And that's largely, you know, the.
Yeah, but if that's separate, why do you have it here on on the information?
This, but it's.
Why would you, why would you put, why would you put it in?
Yeah, okay, sorry. The public service mission staff has those flyers as well, and they can explain it.
So the FAC, which is what you see on the bill there.
It's, it, it's not on the bill. It's on, it's on the flyer that you mailed to us.
So on the bill, there is a charge line that will be called FAC.
FAC, I know, I'm familiar with it.
So that money, when the company presents information about rate increases, they tend to view it as customers are already paying that money through the FAC charge on their bill.
Right.
So when they call out that percent and they say, you know, the percent is is lower, you know, 40% or whatever the percent is, is already being recovered through the fuel adjustment charge.
Okay.
It's it's that after a rate case, not immediately after, there's usually a one month lag, that fuel adjustment charge will go back to zero to reflect that a rate case has occurred. And then it'll either start creeping up or down again, but but we call it a rebase. So at each rate case, unless something really weird has happened, which has happened once or twice, we will rebase the FAC to zero. And so it it is true that customers are already paying some portion of the money that would come in through this rate case because they've been paying it through the FAC. I I think that.
I'll just add, this might help clarify. A portion of what AMRIN Missouri incurs for the cost of the electricity it supplies to customers is recovered through what are called the base rates, which are the rates that are at issue in this case. And then variations that they actually experience from that rate, those costs during the, I think they use six months periods, either six or three, four? Okay, four month periods. In any event, they look at a four month period and to the extent the actual costs vary from the assumed cost based on electricity usage, they'll then make an adjustment. the assumed cost based on electricity usage, they'll then make an adjustment to the fuel charge to reflect that. So if the costs were greater than what were recovered through base rates, you'll see an increase in the fuel charge. If they were lower, you'll see a decrease in it. When she's talking about rebasing it in a rate case, you shift all of the, you, you reset it. You have new costs that are built into the base rates and then you start looking at fluctuations going forward from that. Now, there is a-
The rates of what you're paying or what we're, of what we've, of what we've used.
Customers' base rates.
Okay.
Customer rates.
Our use, okay.
Right. And there's a time lag between whenever the period incurred, so you won't actually probably ever see a fuel charge actually go to zero, but-
Never have.
It'll be lower going, let's say the base rate, fuel charge has been positive. You get a new rate case, the idea, well, what will happen is going forward, if that fuel charge continues as it has been in terms of the costs that are collected through it. In other words, if it's 95% flow-through, it remains that way, the fuel charge will be lower in the future than it would have been because you're collecting it through the base rate. One other thing I wanted to mention, you mentioned 2.4 million customers, I believe, in Missouri. Ameren's customer base is 1.2 million.
Okay, it was just Ameren and it said 2.4. And so I was, I knew you've got Ameren, Missouri, Illinois, and some of those are electric, some of those are gas, so I-
I expect it's a combination of-
Whole electrics about 1.2, but then the residential, as you were asking, is 1,800,000.
I, I believe probably the one, the 2.4 is Ameren as a whole, Ameren, Illinois and Ameren, Missouri Electric.
Yeah, that's right. That's correct.
Okay.
Good question. Do you have any more?
So what, I mean, what exactly then, this 316 million, what exactly is it going for? I mean, I know you've got capital improvements and so forth, but-
A number of different things. I'll highlight some of the examples. So you look at upgraded substations, we have a lot of old substations for, you'll see them in the fences with the wires coming in, the different equipment inside and then lower voltage coming out. Those are really important for reliable service and our ability to communicate with the system. There's a lot of very old equipment out there. This is upgrading, replacing that equipment. You're seeing old poles getting switched out, old wires, putting new ones in. You're seeing, you know, really a lot of smart switches, the ability, like the one that just helped St. Charles this morning, where you have equipment in there that it detects, there's been an outage somewhere, a wire came down or whatever, and it quickly looks at where the other switches are that it can close and isolate where the outage was instead of everybody on that loop being out. And so that happens quickly. It's sort of a self-healing characteristic. And you're also seeing investments in supportive different clean energy projects we're working on. A lot of it ends up being recovery of capital investment, things to build things, improve infrastructure, replace old stuff with new stuff. A lot of it comes down to those things because they're improving reliability and resilience of the system. And we have a lot of older stuff that needs to be replaced.
So why wouldn't that be in your annual budget, based in your budget each year to, when we look at stuff as a household and we know, okay, in five years, we're going to need a new roof. So we start planning for that. I mean, we can't go to somebody and say, hey, we need a new roof, so we're going to, we're going to charge you a little extra. Why, I mean, I'm sure you have money in your budget for capital improvement, but 300 million deficit that you're going to put in permanently forever and increase our rates, it's hard to, it's hard to buy, it's hard to buy into that if it's all capital. And it's hard to buy into if it's, and that, yeah, okay, I'll just stop with the questions because it's question time.
Well, to ask, to ask, which is your question. First of all, this isn't a budget for expenditures to make. The way that these work within the Public Service Commission State of Missouri is, it's all historical costs. This is based on us bringing all of our revenues, expenses, capital investments, everything in that's already been spent. And then we lay all that out in front of the commission. They do what's called a, you know, test year, they look at everything, the whole audit, everything. Other parties as well determine what they think the appropriate revenue requirement should be. We've proposed 316. I know the other parties have already made significant adjustments to that because that's a normally part of the process. And the numbers are updated through the end of last year, actually. So there are some, there's some data that's updated as better information is made available. But in terms of the capital investments and why you see, you know, is there some transparency on our budget and what we're investing in and why, and what are the benefits of it? Well, actually, we make a five-year filing, actually, we're going to make a filing here like next week, I think, or pardon, maybe, you know, 16th or something, where we file a five-year smart energy plan, we'll call our smart energy plan investment. It shows all these different categories of investment in each of the following five years and reports on what we had budgeted last year and what we actually spent and explains differences. And there's actually a public hearing for that that's available online, February 27th, February 27th. We will have a, a hearing where we go, where people can call in, ask questions, and they see all the data in that filing. And different parties dial in and ask questions about it, and the other parties see those filings as well.
So is that the same group that would be, I love the transparency.
Okay.
Is that the same group that keeping you accountable, keeping Ameren accountable? So this is what our estimate is, we're going for 300, we're putting these plans together based on a lot of actuarial data, blah, blah, blah. But if, say like you're getting 400 million instead of this 316 million at the end of the day, is that, how are, how is that? The stockholders love it. I mean, your stocks have been, you know, if we'd bought five years ago, I was just reading an article, it's up 75% return on investment. That's, I just read an article on that. So the accountability to the customer and your stockholders, I mean, where, where is that, where is, who's, where does that come in? Does that, that, that group?
An excellent question, and everybody in the room here should be very interested in that. And what it comes down to is, Public Service Commission is the party in the middle, and they, their, their legal standard is safe and adequate service, which is on us-
Absolutely.
And just in reasonable rates. And if they think something's an imprudent investment, they disagree with something we spent on, we don't, they don't see the benefits of that for customers, they think we mismanaged the cost of the project or whatever, these rate reviews were the opportunity to throw that some of those costs out.
Okay.
Okay, so, and the SEP file is, this filing we're making that shows our five-year plan, that is with the Public Service Commission, and it is a public filing, so it's available for anybody who wants to look at that.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. Good questions.
It's probably worth clarifying a little bit about the SEP, a little bit about the costs incurred that are, that are part of that. So there was some legislation passed about four years ago, three years ago, four years ago, that gives Ameren some favorable accounting treatment on, it's, it's accurate that they are not allowed to recover a return through rates until after the, the plant is used and useful for service. There was a legislative change a few years ago that they're now able to defer depreciation expense and earn interest on that until they do come in for a rate. And then that capitalized portion of their financing costs is eligible to come, to become part of the rate, rate base in a rate case. And we use a lot of words that sound alike and make it very confusing.
Yeah, two questions. The first one should be easy to answer. What's your annual cost of lobbying and political campaign contributions in the Missouri Legislature?
I have to go look at that for the Missouri Ethics Commission website. It's all publicly disclosed. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Ballpark.
I don't know the number.
Warren, that's your job.
I'd have to go look at the Missouri Ethics Commission to give an accurate number.
Okay, well-
But it is all publicly available there. And none of it's disclosed, recovered customers' rates either.
We know that, that the Missouri Legislature and the governor also appoint the Public Service Commission, so there's kind of a weird relationship there that you're paying politicians as well. I have another question. I'm glad the gentleman asked about Bitcoin, which is stupid and it's a racket. And when I saw that, I thought, well, that just tells us what kind of company Ameren is. So another thing that doesn't make sense to me is continuing to pay high costs for fuel when we should be rapidly changing to sun and wind. You buy your coal from Powder River, Wyoming. It's a long ways away to be bringing coal down on coal trains 24/7, 365 days a year. Been talking about this fuel adjustment cost. When we get to sun and wind, there is no fuel adjustment cost. That comes free. Obviously, it's going to take money to invest, but I looked at your IRP, your Integrated Resource Plan, you're not, you're not even planning that. You're planning maybe to switch to gas, maybe in 20, 20 or 30 years or so to get some alternative. But your main plan seems to be to keep making money off of us by burning dirty coal and maybe a, a gas as well. So question here is, what do y'all think?
Okay, good questions. So let's talk a little bit about our Integrated Resource Plan that the gentleman referred to. So, you know, just last year, we retired one of our coal-fired units, the Merrimack unit. We have another unit retiring in a couple more years, and we have two units after that scheduled in the 2030s and late, and late 2030s. We are seeing an aggressive transfer over to more wind and solar energy. Right now, we have, in fact, we just got approval for the Huck Finn Solar Project, the commissioned just this last week. We have another large proposal in front of the Public Service Commission right now. We're looking at 2,700 megawatts of solar and 2,700 megawatts of wind. And we do see these as a real opportunity to get out from under some of the fuel costs you're concerned about. But I would tell you how quickly you make that transition, we need to be really thoughtful. These resources, while they provide, there's two things we need to make sure in order to keep your lights on. Capacity to serve peak periods and energy to serve all the time, even outside of those peak periods. The solar and wind can be helpful on energy, although it's not there all the time. And with the ITCs and PTCs, there's a lot of good cost advantages on solar and wind. It's one of the reasons you see this transfer that we're going through. But we've got to be reasonable about it and be respectful of the fact that we don't always have the wind and solar, and we've got to have capacity to serve peak periods. Some of these really cold periods we had back in Storm Yuri, the extreme heat of last summer, even Storm Elliott just this last December, we needed those units operational or we would have been very short on the ability to serve peak. And so we really need to figure out that balance, and we're moving forward as aggressively as we can, looking at cost and affordability. Okay? But it's an excellent question, and I get this a lot, I understand the concern there. But, you know, we can't simply shut the units down and still have the capacity to serve peaks.
Any other last minute questions before we move into the second part of the hearing?
Let me get this to you.
Why is Ameren so dead set against net metering?
Excellent question. And this is net metering, for those who don't know, if you have like a solar project on your house or something, there's a net metering interconnect where you can receive some compensation if you're generating electricity. First, it offsets your own load, that's the primary advantage, because to the degree you're offset your own in real time, that's, you're, you're getting out of the whole, the entire wholesale cost at that point. If you send power back to us, I think the concern is that you're getting an avoided rate instead of a retail rate. Is that the concern? Because, to be clear, now, there's been legislation for several years to make net metering harder, and we've not been out supporting that legislation.
Well, personally speaking, I mean, Ameren has a wealth of rooftops out there that they should be dying to put solar panels on. And I find it amusing that you've offered rebates in the past. They're very limited and they go quick. So to me, as a businessperson, instead of having to invest in more, more power plants or solar or wind farms, you develop a construction company that's sole purpose is to put solar panels on people's roofs that want to, you know, raise their hand. And there's got to be a tremendous potential for, for, you know, energy generation.
Really good question. And the, you know, the net metering, the battles that have been going on in the policy side, generally in Jefferson City between different parties, has been, okay, we net meter a customer, somebody's got private solar on their property. And most of the fight hasn't been about, you know, putting solar panels on, but it's been getting an avoided rate for what you send back to the utility. And the reason, that's, it's laid out in statute, the way that the cost recovery is there. That's the way most of the states did that when it was initially passed. There have been some efforts to move that up to a higher rate, and then some other customer groups object to it because it would drive up their bills to have that happening. So it'll be interesting to see where it goes in the years to come, but thus far, it hasn't been, it hasn't been moving in a direction that's really all that favorable. I do think where you are seeing is greater interest in community solar programs where people can sign up for, own a portion of panels and get output from that. That's something we've also been interested in.
Just one final question. I mean, has Ameren even considered the possibility of owning those panels on that person's roof? And I, I understand the liability and everything else, but, you know, I for one would raise my hand and say, yeah, you want to do it, go ahead, you know, treat me right.
Yes, we have considered these programs. They're in place in some other states. It may be something that happens here. I'll tell you, one of the things that, that gets interesting, you start seeing this when people are talking about it, is liability insurance and effects on roofing and things like that. And once it's on there, whose liability is it when the house transfers ownership, things like that? That's made, I don't think that, I think that's slowed down some of that stuff happening in other states, but there are some other states doing that. It's a good question.
I just have two quick questions, one for Ameren and one for the Office of Public Counsel. First question, would it be, would you characterize, in just looking at the residential impact of the proposal, would it be fair to say that if we're shifting the, the increase from the variable portion to the fixed portion, would that have the greatest negative impact on the smallest volume users and the least impact on the largest volume residential users?
Let me just make sure I understand your question. For the rate classes where you would shift it from $9 a month to 13, does that have the greater impact on the lower impact or the low users or high users of power? It would have the greater impact on the low users of power, yes. And if, to the degree you go the other way, it has a greater impact on the higher uses of power. Ideally, when you design the rates, if it's somebody right in the middle, average usage, it doesn't make any difference on the final bill. But as you shift above the usage, it has a great, less of an impact if you increase the customer charge. I think I answered your question.
Yes.
Good.
And then question for the OPC, right here. Okay, so I was curious, typically in a utility rate case, we receive a published opinion from the Public Service Commission staff and from the Office of Public Counsel as to what they believe the proper rate should be as an outcome of the case. We did receive that from the PSC staff. Looks like we did not receive it from the OPC. We received an explanation that the OPC has not had time to develop a proposal. And I'm just curious, what changed in this case versus previous cases where the, the OPC was not able to provide an opinion, and when will that opinion be available?
Well, first of all, we normally don't express an opinion until after local public hearings, so we hear the public input because that may influence some positions we take. I can tell you that we do, as Warren mentioned earlier, have a disagreement about the return on equity, which is the profit margin on investment. And it's substantial. Ours is below staff. I, I'm not sure what the number is in terms of impact. I would guess it's something like $100 million difference with the utility. We have, anticipate having some additional issues, but we haven't developed those yet and made anything public, so we were just prepared to disclose what we have.
Can you ballpark when you might form a precise opinion about the, your, your rate expectation?
Well, rebuttal testimony is coming up in a few days, so I anticipate our positions will be more solidified at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any last minute questions before we head into the second part? Looks like one more, and then we'll take a quick break and go to the second part of the hearing.
Is it possible for, you know, as you get to choose these different rate plans, I mean, there's no way to really know exactly how much you're using during, throughout the day. Do they, is there any way for a consumer to, short of jumping in one month at one thing and changing it, which doesn't really affect it? Is there any way for a consumer to actually know what they're using throughout the day?
Excellent question. I'm going to phone, I'm going to phone a friend here, okay, because he'll, he knows.
Obviously, you've done homework to pick these rates out.
Yeah, yeah, so there, there's, there's a new tool we got online that if you log into it, it has a couple of features that I think would be really helpful for this. One is it will, it will- One is it will, it will look at your historical usage over the last several months and tell you what your bill would have been on each of the different rates. So based on your own usage profile. And then the second thing is it's now going to show you in near-real time, which means like, you know, the next day, it'll show you your usage in 15-minute increments. So you can say, what time of day did I use power? And then, if you are actually interested in managing that, you can actually look at that profile and say, oh, I know I did my, you know, laundry at this time, and I can see it showed up with this many, this many kilowatt-hours during that period. But that's available in our Energy Manager Tool online that if, that you have to, you know, make an online account to log into and be able to see your usage information. But it'll, it'll give you down to every 15 minutes of the day how much you used.
And you can do projections based on what your, what your suggestions are for this? So, okay, okay, thanks.
So how do they find that again, Steve? How do you find that information?
Just on the Ameren.com website, there's an area to log in, and if you don't have an online account, you'll have to make one. But it's right on the main page that you would just log into your, your online account.
The thought is, we're putting these smart meters, and it'd be really important to have access to something like that so you could actually do some comparative analysis, if you're inclined to do so.
And Warren can probably speak to the actual numbers, but just to be clear, not all Ameren Missouri customers currently do have the metering to, to do that. So that'll be wrapped up by 2025?
2024. Yeah, we're about a year ahead of schedule right now on those installations.
The $316 million number's been thrown around quite a bit. I just want to make sure everyone understands that's the increase in revenues on an annual basis that Ameren Missouri is seeking. And that correlates to the 11.61%. Well, it'd be, what would be collected in rates from customers? That's what they're targeting, Rick. They're targeting designing rates to collect an additional $316 million per year from their customers.
I do think in the trip, there's been some adjustments that would bring those numbers down, but that was the original filing.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you all participating in the question-answer session. Again, the second part of the hearing is just on the record, is just making your statements. You won't be able to ask the commissioners or the judge any questions. They may ask you a question, but you won't be able to ask a question of them. Thank you so much. We'll take just a minute or two break, and we'll start the second part. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, if we can find a seat, we're going to start the formal part of the hearing. Good afternoon. Brian, can I get, can I get a little more volume? On, I'm just not getting, okay, maybe I'm just not close enough. Okay, good afternoon. Let's go on the record. It is February 9th, 2023, and the current time is 1:16 PM, and we are at the Sant Charles County Administrative Building in Sant Charles, Missouri. Now, the question-and-answer portion of the local public hearing just ended, and if you had questions about this rate case, I hope you're able to get answers to that. Now, the Missouri Public Service Commission has set aside this time today for a local public hearing in file number ER-2022-0337, which is captioned as "In the Matter of Union Electric Company Doing Business as Ameren Missouri's Tariffs to Adjust Its Revenues for Electric Service." My name's John Clark. I'm the regulatory law judge overseeing this local public hearing today. Now, the Missouri Public Service Commission regulates the rates of investor-owned utilities to see that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality and safety of operations of investor-owned utilities in Missouri. Now, the commission is made up of five commissioners. Sitting next to me on my right is the chairman of the commission, Scott Rup, and also commissioners Maida Coleman, Jason Holzman, and Glenn Kolkmeier. I heard Mr., I heard Commissioner Cole, or Commissioner Holzman participating by WebEx. Do we have any other commissioners on the WebEx at this point?
Yes, Commissioner Coleman is here.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Now, I had mentioned four commissioners, and I said there are five commissioners, and that's because one commission seat is currently vacant at the moment. Now, the commissioners are appointed by the governor to fixed terms and confirmed by the Senate. And the commissioners hire a staff of engineers, accountants, attorneys, financial analysts, and other specialists in the field of utility regulation. I've already gone over the commissioners that are here with me today, so I'm not going to do that again. I'm going to start the formal portion of this hearing by asking the parties to enter their appearance for the record, starting with Ameren Missouri. And, and your mic may not be on.
Yeah, appearing on behalf of Ameren Missouri, Jennifer Moore, and I provided you with my address.
On behalf of the commission's staff.
Eric Vandergriff, on behalf of the commission's staff.
Thank you. On behalf of the Office of the Public Counsel.
Nathan Williams, Chief Deputy Public Counsel. My address is PO Box 33, 2230, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65102.
Thank you. And there are a number of intervenors in this case. Are there any parties present that I have not called today? Okay, I hear none and see no hands. Now, for those of you, thank you. For those of you who would like to provide comments to the commission today, I'm going to call the names that I have listed on the sign-up sheet in the order they appear. When I call your name, please come up to the mic. You're welcome to adjust it so that it, it works better for you. And at that time, I'll ask you to state and spell your name for the record, and that's because we have a court reporter here who's taking down everything. At that point, I will swear you in, and you'll be able to give your comments to the commission. Because this is a, a formal hearing, we do swear you in, and even though these are comments to the commission, I'm going to call them testimony. And that's because if the commission decides to use this or rely on this in some way, it needs to be part of the commission's official record. Now, after you've made your comments to the commission, please stay up at the microphone for just a second, and that's because myself, the commission, or some of the attorneys that are present may have questions for you. And I'm going to ask the attorneys, if you have questions, just get my attention, and the commissioners, if you have a question at any time, just go ahead and ask. Now, the commission won't be able to answer any of your questions today. The question-and-answer portion was for you to get answers from the parties to your questions, and that's because the commissioners and myself have to remain impartial until after the evidentiary hearing on this case. If you have questions that weren't answered during the Q and A part, I would encourage you to talk to the company, the commission's staff, the Office of the Public Counsel. I've also got a couple of numbers, if anybody would like them, for both Ameren Customer Service and the Missouri Public Service Commission Consumer Services. So I'm happy to give those to anybody who would like them. I'm also going to ask that, as people are speaking at the microphone, you may agree or disagree with what they're saying, but I would ask that you give them the courteous, that you will give them the respect that you would want people to give you when you're speaking. Chairman, would you like to make any opening remarks?
Just want to thank everybody for coming out here, and to just to one more time reiterate, the judge and I cannot answer any questions. We are here just to listen. That would be akin to, in the middle of a murder trial, you wouldn't say, hey, Judge, do you think he's guilty? You know, because that would be show bias. So, we, we're here to take notes and listen to what you have to say, but we cannot comment on anything. And we get our chance when we have our, our hearing with all the attorneys in Jeff City and all the evidence, so. But thank you very much, and we will be taking your comments into consideration.
Thank you, Chairman. And the first name, and forgive me and correct me if I mispronounce your name, the first name I have listed is Tom Stanton, Stanton, I'm sorry, Mr. Stanton. The microphone's up here, if you would like to come up. Would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Name's Tom Stanton, T-O-M-S-T-A-N-T-O-N.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please go ahead. What would you like to tell the commission today?
Well, actually, I have a couple of questions. I didn't realize this was just strictly comments, but one would be, being on a limited budget, Social Security, I would like to see to where they continue sending you bills in the mail to where you can pay by check instead of going just strictly electronic. Everybody seems to be doing that, and I don't own a computer, let alone have any internet access, so. But that's, that's the one thing. The other thing was, I was curious, with, what this meeting's all about, the rate increase, with everything pushing towards this clean energy, do they have any kind of projections as to what those increases are going to be, and when's that all going to start? Because I'm sure it's going to be a lot more than what we're paying, we're looking at here. That's all I have.
Okay, I don't have any questions for you. Are there any questions, or any questions from attorneys?
Your Honor, I don't have any questions, but Mr. Stanton, outside the door are some customer service representatives that will help you with your question regarding whether we are going to continue to accept payment by check.
Yeah, one lady suggested I bring it up at this comment thing, so that's the only reason I did.
Okay, that's helpful.
All right, thanks.
Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention, and thank you for your comments today, Mr. Stanton. The next name I have listed is Eileen Zuckerman. And Ms. Zuckerman, would you please state and spell your name for the record?
Eileen, E-I-L-E-E-N, Zuckerman, Z is in zebra, U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what would you like to tell the commission today?
I have two different things I wanted to be stated. One is that I think these public service meetings are important, and so many of them for the other utilities are held in North County, and it's terribly hard for older people to get up to North County. If you're not familiar with the area, it's very difficult. So I would like to ask that all of the meetings be held in a centrally-located place where people can easily access it, either during the day or in the evening. And I know that's an inconvenience for the people, but as a consumer, I greatly appreciate it. The second thing I wanted to say is I wanted to thank Ameren. When you call them, if there is an outage, I like the way that they tell you where the outage is and how long it will be until service is restored, and they've been right on the money every time. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Zuckerman. Steve Wolf?
Steve, S-T-E-V-E, Wolf, W-U-L-F-F.
And you might want to adjust the microphone just a little bit so I can hear you better. And Mr. Wolf, do you solemnly, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what, what comments do you have for the commission today?
As judge, chairman, members of the commission, I do not believe Ameren deserves a rate increase. When electric utilities across the country started switching to wind and solar-generated electricity years ago, Ameren put its head down and stuck with coal. It was a bad decision. One utility in neighboring Iowa was generating about 50% of its total needs from wind. So maybe, if Ameren had been on the ball, we'd be looking at a rate decrease instead of a rate increase. Of course, the wind turbines do need to be put in the right place. Ameren has also disregarded environmental regulations when expanding Rush Island without adding required pollution reduction equipment. Another very bad management decision. I call it cheating. Makes me wonder if Ameren's management can be trusted. In my opinion, Ameren's board of directors haven't made decisions to penalize management for these poor decisions, bear the responsibility for their apparent lack of oversight. The board of directors is elected by shareholders. The shareholders, through their elected representatives on the board, should bear the blunt of the funding for any, for this amount of money taken out as a reduction in profit margin. Ratepayers didn't make these poor decisions, but are being asked to pay. I say no, and I hope that the commission will not grant the rate increase.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wolf. Patricia Schon? Schuba? And would you state and spell your name for the record?
It's Patricia, P-A-T-R-I-C-I-A, Schuba, S-C-H-U-B-A.
And Ms. Schuba, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what would you like to tell us today?
Well, first, I'd like to say hello and thank you for hosting the hearing from folks like me who live near these power plants. I live in Labadee, Missouri. My family's been there for three, four generations. And before I came here this morning, I put a notice on my Facebook page, and over 30 people responded within about five minutes to say, I wish I could go. It's noon on a workday, I can't be there, but carry my thoughts with you. So I'm going to read a few of those if I have time at the end. But I wanted to make basically five points about what I don't like about this rate increase. The primary thing that really bothers me, this idea of a imposed mandatory monthly fee. I call it a junk fee. I think we heard that phrase in the last couple of days. But to charge everyone even $12 a month and potentially $24 a month in the future, Ameren has in some ways stated that prior, I think is unjust and unfair, and it penalizes people who use very little energy. We have a farm. We basically turn on the lights for the cattle and the horses and the sheep, and we pay that fee every month, and we use like very little energy. And then I think of the elderly woman living in her home who's trying to make ends meet, and she always has that bill there every month into the future. And so if that would go to $24 a month, do the math, you know, you could send a child to a community college with that money in 10 years, for one year of college. So it's significant. You know, we like to say these are small amounts, a little bit here, a little bit there, but it affects people's lives, especially the ones that are saving energy and trying to raise families and trying to be retired without an income. The second thing I wanted to say is that, and I said it in my question-answer discussion, Ameren has the privilege to be a monopoly utility in this state. If you look at their coverage map, it's a significant number of Missourians are forced by energy from them. And I think it should be available for rich and poor, for those who have no choice but to pay the fees that the Public Service Commission will allow. I think the Public Service Commission needs to limit charges, especially given that this company posted income of about $1 billion. I think it was last year or the year before. So they have plenty of money to invest in clean energy. They have plenty of money to pay their executives $2 to $5 million a year. I think everybody needs to tighten their belt, including this company. And I don't think I said it before, I'm going to be bold enough to say, I don't think anybody should pay $12 per month in a monthly fee. And we're talking about, you know, raising them out from nine to 12. We shouldn't have to pay that at all. It's like what you see on your phone bills, on your other types of bills. They should be transparent with the money they need to run their company and to have a reasonable profit margin, period. Citizen ratepayers should not have to pay for Ameren's legal fees. I think this came up in paying for lobbying, and you guys denied it. The Public Service Commission denied that reimbursement. They're asking for money to pay for them going up against our federal government, trying to defend our communities against air pollution. And we keep saying Rush Island, but Labadee was in that case as well, because that judge said that they should have to put cleaner technologies on Labadee. And Labadee is the motherload of pollution in this region. So I live near Labadee. There's many of my family and friends live near Labadee, and it affects places as far away as the East Coast. It certainly affects St. Louis City. So no, they shouldn't get recovery for legal fees, especially since they were fighting us, the citizens of the United States, in that pollution case. Okay. They should stop disconnecting ratepayers. They're one of the highest in the nation. And figure out how to produce energy and make it affordable for all Missourians, since they have been given the right to be a monopoly to produce and sell it in our state. They need to incentivize energy efficiency and make it possible for all to benefit from the government funds they are getting to upgrade and reduce their costs. There's very little discussion of that today. They're getting money under, you know, federal incentives that have been put in place in the last year or two with the new administration. Let's make this work for the people of Missouri. And finally, my real pet peeve is they should be producing more clean energy and clean up the air and water and soil pollution from a century of burning coal and fossil fuels. We cannot leave communities like Labadee, the community around Rush Island, the community around Merrimack, and the community in North County around the Sioux Power Plant that is mostly farmers behind to suffer the consequences of multi-generational pollution. And I wanted to mention, one of the people who responded to my post, she lives in St. Louis County, and she pointed out, because she's a shareholder, annual proxy statement of 2021 put Baxter at over $9 million per year, Lyons over $4 million per year, Moan getting $3 million per year, and Dyo over $2 million per year. This is not a company that's hurting for profits. So please, 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 Public Service Commission, Department of, or the Public Counsel, do what you can to reduce this rate and make it fair for Missourians. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to say, you had indicated that several people that had posted your Facebook were unable to be here today.
Right.
At the end of this hearing, before I let everybody go, I'm going to let people know how they can make comments using the commission's website.
Perfect. And I tried to share that as well. I know my sister couldn't be here. She had to be at her child's school. And she came up to my house, was wanting to try to type something up to send it in. So people do want to be part of this process. They need to be part of this process, especially since we have no other choices. This is what we have. So thank you for listening to those people. You don't see their face here today, but they are concerned about this and they're out there. And if I could gather 30-something up in five minutes, I bet if there was another way to reaching out to the public, like even maybe, I mean, thinking outside of the box to do something on social media where you get input, I suspect you'd have a lot more input. So thank you very much, though, because we appreciate you.
Thank you. And we're also having another local public hearing tonight at St. Louis Community College in Florissant Valley at 6:00 p.m.
Right, right. And just to give you an idea, where I come from, near Labadee, it was about 45 minutes to get here. And luckily, I could come in the middle of the day. So not complaining, just saying that's a fact. Yeah.
Ms. Schuba, I appreciate you taking the time to be here today, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much.
And again, I apologize, I feel like I'm getting almost all of these names wrong.
Lloyd Klinest, Tendover Lane, Villaridge, Missouri, 630.
You don't have to tell us, and I'd rather you not tell me where you live. We have rules against revealing people's confidential, customer-specific information. If you want to tell me more generally where you live, you know, I live in North County, South County.
Franklin County.
Okay. Would you please state and spell your name for the court reporter? Klinest?
Klinest.
And Mr. Klinest, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
What would you like to tell us today?
I object to the Ameren proposed rate hikes. Number one, the fixed charges are regressive, hurting low-income taxpayers, ratepayers the most. Since January 2022, Ameren has disconnected 53,100 customers for late payment, while another 228,412 customers are currently behind on their bills. This new rate hike would drive even more of our low-income population out of electric service, possibly even out of their homes. Secondly, the fixed charges discourage energy conservation because customers pay it no matter how much or how little electricity they use. Thirdly, the rate changes compensate for what should be done, that Ameren take measures to operate more efficiently, cleaner, using less expensive energy solutions. The frightening reality is the irreparable damages Ameren is wrecking on our air, land, and water, and consequently, on our health and well-being. I live within a 10-mile radius of the even larger 40-mile radius of the Labadee plants' sulfur dioxide emissions. This plant is also in the nation's top sulfur dioxide, carbon dioxide, and nitrogen oxide emission polluters. The Labadee plant also devastates our land, expanding waste ponds and landfills, even adjacent to wetlands and floodplains, violating or barely meeting minimum requirements. Imagine a Missouri water network underground, every bit as spectacular as our above-ground network of rivers and streams. Missouri is celebrated as a karst country. Now see that underground beauty transmogrified into a sewer system, delivering its deadly waste throughout our land. The Missouri Department of Natural Resources knew as early as 1992 that 154-acre unlined coal ash pond at Ameren's Labadee plant had been leaking some 50,000 gallons of coal ash waste per day. The same Labadee plant violates the Federal Clean Water Act with respect to hot water discharge, putting wildlife in the Missouri River at risk. I ask the Public Service Commission to perform its public service to benefit the people of Missouri over the profit of a virtually private interest. Thank you for accepting my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Klinest. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you for your comments today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Russell. Please feel free to adjust the microphone so it's most comfortable for you. Would you please state and spell your name for the court reporter?
Becky, B-E-C-K-Y, Russell, R-U-S-S-E-L-L.
And Ms. Russell, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do.
And what comments do you have for the commission today?
I don't have too much technical stuff to say, but I will say that I am representing, from Union, Missouri, a lot of folks who could not make it up here, and we had no options at the southern end of the area. We're in Franklin County. And so, yes, I did drive up with other people. I had no intention of being here, but since I had other people to come with. We've usually had a wider selection of places to go, because I have been to these other meetings, much closer to home. And everyone is upset about this rate hike, however it must be, or is to be, when one can pay millions of dollars per year to the upper echelon, it doesn't. And then we have the water pollution, and the air pollution by the holders. It's not just fixed income. Most of my friends live on fixed incomes. And if it's for everyone, for them to have the object to ask for money, I think is beyond the limit. Thank you.
You appear to write better than I read. Fay Malone?
(inaudible) my name's Fay Malone, F-A-Y-E-M-A-L-O-N-E.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes. Well, I've just got a couple of things to say. One is, yeah, I don't want to see it go up. I live in a city itself, so you already pay taxes on that, and then these extra charges that are already on the bill. You use a certain amount of electric, then it goes down, but the first part you pay higher, so you got that. And then when you're paying city taxes, because you live within the city, that makes it difficult with the bill. The fuel that are used, I think is enough. And other story. I called in, and I said, done that, and I got a discount. He heard stuff, and I said, anything? She goes, well, there's a certain income. Well, our income is low, but too high for the standard that they use, where they could put the bill, you know, you'd think they'd want to help you, you know, with that, and you could just pay it through your electric bill. They weren't ready to hear that. The other story I'd like to tell you is, a neighbor of mine, she was rushed to the hospital. She was sent home with oxygen tanks. Her electric was about to be turned off, because she was already sick before that, a few weeks before. She called, tried to get help. They really didn't help her much. They told her some steps to go, but she had to get a written statement from a doctor. She didn't see the doctor yet, it wasn't time. She wanted to see the doctor for a few more days. They said, well, if you don't have the money, the electric gets turned off. She's on oxygen tank, you got to have electric for that. I called in, in her behalf, to try to help her out, too. They told me the exact same thing. She's got to go in, pay the certain amount of money, or it'll be turned off. I said, but she's still on oxygen tank. She's got to have it, she's going to die. They really didn't help her. The family and I, we all came up with money to help her get this paid in order not to turn it off. So I think something needs to look there at that situation also, because she is still in the same situation, and not making enough money, can barely go to work, but not in the situation where she can actually apply for disability yet. So she's facing this every month. And I just think something needs to happen in that way for people. Investigate it. Find out that people really do need that indeed. If they don't believe it, send someone out, some way to help people like that. But that's all.
So in regard to, and so you're talking about programs, you'd like to see fewer income requirements and lower bars to entry for that.
Yeah, that as well. And I don't want to see the raise. I mean, really, truthfully, I can't afford it for it to keep going up either. But I just think there's some other plans. They should come up with something to help people. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Took me a couple times. And would you please state and spell your name?
Brett, B-R-E-T, Gustafson, G-U-S-T-A-F-S-O-N.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you. Just to echo some of the comments that have already been made, the first thing that concerns me is that voting yes on this rate hike is basically rewarding a bad company for bad behavior. We've heard about the pollution. I have a small child with asthma. We know that part of the air pollution problem in the St. Louis region and the surrounding counties is tied directly to the burning of coal in Ameren's plants. I often ask these Ameren people if they don't have children and grandchildren that also have to breathe air. I never really get a straight answer from them. I know, Mr. Rup, I know you have children as well. I'm just as concerned about your children as I am about mine. And for many, many decades, Ameren has shown absolute disregard for our children, continuing to burn coal when we know other alternatives are available, not only continuing to burn coal, but continuing to break the law in burning coal in several of their plants by not upgrading their scrubbers. So it may look like it's all legal on paper, but it's kind of like Spire, that other crooked utility we have in this region. We know they're doing outright illegal acts. So the basic problem here is that we keep seeing the Public Service Commission granting rate increases and saying yes to everything that Ameren asks for, and it's rewarding bad behavior from a bad company. It's not something we It's not something we need. Now, if they were investing in infrastructure we need, energy storage, transformation to wind and sun, utility-scale storage, I would be more than happy to pay more on my bill, because that's stuff we need. They are not doing the right thing, and they should not be rewarded. The second thing is about the Public Service Commission itself. I try to have good faith in our system, but as I look over the years, it seems that the Public Service Commission always seems to do what the utilities want and not what the people want. At the university, we call this regulatory capture, when the industry that's supposed to be regulated actually captures control of the regulators. I try not to believe that. I don't want to believe that. I want to think that everyone is honest and doing their best here. But what we see over and over is the utility asking for something and getting it. And I believe that's probably what's going to happen in this case as well. Usually what does happen is the Public Service Commission, whether here or another state, they'll come back and say, "Well, we won't give you that much, but we'll give you X." And then it makes everyone feel like somebody did their job, when in fact, they shouldn't get anything. So that's another reason I'd like to be proven wrong. I'd like for the Public Service Commission to find some courage. I know you've got the whole Missouri legislature on your back, the governor on your back, and all of them have Ameren in their pockets. So I know that's going to take a lot of courage to say no on this rate increase, but I really would like to ask you to do that. And the final thing is just for public information's sake, Ameren never sleeps. They've got their lobbyists and Warren out there in Jefferson City. They're already pushing a new bill in the State House and the Senate that will try to give them the right of first refusal over large-scale transmission projects. And what that means is yet another way that competition is being restricted. It's really funny, this is a state run by the Republican Party, and the Republican Party talks a lot about free markets and capitalism, this, that, and the other. But when it comes to Ameren, they don't like competition. They don't like free markets. And so when you reward that utility, you're simply rewarding something that's basically anti-American. We need more competition. We need more companies to be able to generate electricity, transmit electricity, and expand wind and solar in this state, and stop letting Ameren basically control us, control the politicians, and control everything to keep burning dirty coal or gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. I appreciate your comments. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes. I just wanted to bring up that Ameren got their last rate increase, as far as my research goes, in February of '21, which was $220 million. Prior to that, it was 2011 that they were granted a rate increase. So there's a 10-year period that we went without a rate increase to Ameren. And then within the past two years, there's one in '21, and now one in '23. I don't know what's going on, but I just want to reiterate to you, you are called the Public Service Commission, which means you are the stopgap between a monopoly and us poor suckers at the end that have to pay for all this crap. Now, my mother's on fixed income, and this is going to be the straw that broke the camel's back for her, because she didn't have that kind of money. I don't really have that kind of money, but you know what? We're just going to have to suck it up and do it. The Public Service Commission has allowed every utility that we have to pay a rate increase over the past two, three years. This is now Ameren's up for a second time. We got it in '21, so we're coming back in '23. I challenge you guys, Public Service Commission, to serve the public and protect us against this. You're a monopoly. You can do whatever you want, and you can dazzle them with all kinds of figures and do creative accounting, everything else. Ameren does not need a rate increase. The public in Missouri cannot bear another rate increase. So please, do what you are appointed to do for those you were appointed to do it for. Thank you.
Hello, thanks. You pronounced it very nicely.
Thank you. Would you please spell it for the record?
Caroline, C-A-R-O-L-I-N-E, Pufault. P as in Paul, U, F as in Frank, A-L-T as in Tom.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes.
And what would you like to tell me today?
Okay, great. First of all, thanks for the extended question-and-answer period before this. I thought that was very helpful, and thanks for having a hearing. I'll jump ahead to the bottom line of my position. First of all, I'm Missouri native, and I live in St. Louis County. I would encourage the Public Service Commission to oppose the rate increase. The rate is a regressive tax or aggressive cost. We should not be asking ratepayers to pay more unless Ameren is doing more to address energy efficiency, to give more help to those with lower income, and to be more forward-thinking in how they're going to reduce the fossil fuel use in our utility system and clean up their mess in the coal ash business. I want to really express appreciation for a lot of the comments that have come before me. I think they're very on the mark when they talk about the hardship this will place on many people. Please take that into consideration. After that basic statement, I just want to express some frustrations on my understanding of what the utility company like Ameren is, how it is structured. I've been reading a little bit about the history of utilities. Right now, I'm reading a book called California Burning, which is about the history of PG and E. And I'd encourage anyone to read a little bit about the history of the development of utilities in this country. But basically, now that we are in a situation where we realize the damage that fossil fuels cause, we can no longer operate on a system where you make money by producing more. And it seems like that's the basic underlying assumption of most utility companies now, even though your company is controlled by or impacted by a public service commission. They're basically trying to reward their stockholders, and they have to produce more to get more, they have to upgrade and do more capital improvements to make money. And Ameren sure has been making some money. We know that, and they've been paying their higher-paid employees a lot. So that's very discouraging. We're in a kind of a backward system here. I certainly don't have the answer on how to get around it, but the system we have now is just not working to produce a public good, which is less energy consumption, energy efficiency, more renewables. There's been some talk about renewables, and I'm glad that we've been hearing about that. One of the things, for example, that would be great for Ameren to get out in front on is the rooftop solar issue on more public spaces or commercial spaces like parking lots. You've probably seen some of the news items about in France how they are really expanding the use of solar energy with solar roofs over parking lots, happening in a few other places in this country. But that is a totally untapped resource that has minimal, I would think, it is certainly some transmission costs involved, but a lot less than trying to get solar energy from a more distant place. So someone mentioned community solar. That's a great opportunity. But, boy, if we could see Ameren just going full steam ahead with these kinds of progressive measures, that would help give us a little faith in the larger picture. And again, I just want to reinforce an opposition to this significant rate increase, which will hurt a lot of customers. Please rethink that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Help this down. Thank you.
Would you please say and spell your name for the record?
Yep. It's Helen, H-E-L-E-N, Host, just like it sounds, H-O-S-T.
And Dr. Host, what would you like to tell us today?
Do I need to do the swearing?
Yes, you do. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do. I do. Thank you all for offering us the opportunity to speak publicly about how we feel about the rate increase and just energy generation, or any energy generation by Ameren in general. So I'm, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I can talk a little bit more short. I'm a clinician, a researcher, a wife and a mother of three. I've been working in healthcare for over 30 years in the St. Louis region. I'm here today because I am hopeful that the Public Service Commission will not approve Ameren's proposed rate increase. It is shortsighted for our state and burdensome to customers, especially those in lower socioeconomic brackets. We are just on the rebound from a time of economic duress, really still in the midst of it. The COVID pandemic disproportionately affected those of color and lower socioeconomic standing the most, and now Ameren is asking us all to pay more. This is despite Ameren increasing its income in 2021 by almost $120 million from the previous year. Ameren is a monopoly utility and one of the largest polluters in our state. Their detrimental effects of burning coal also disproportionately affect those who are most vulnerable in our community. That is what makes this rate increase especially onerous. We're asking folks who suffer health-wise from the effects of coal burning in our community to pay more for this utility, even in a time when financially they cannot afford the increase. There is social disparity when it comes to where people live and how they are able to adapt to the pollution resulting from Ameren's use of coal. People under socioeconomic stress cannot just simply move to a different area. And quite frankly, we have the air that blows, the bad air, all over the place, including neighboring states. So we're affecting not only Missourians, but our neighboring neighbors nearby. Sadly, all of us in this region are exposed to the effects of Ameren's continued burning of coal to produce energy. Each individual's health and wellness is closely linked to their environment. We know this through many, many studies that have been done up to this point in time. Burning fossil fuels, especially coal, is making us sick in two ways, from the immediate impact of direct air pollutants and from the long-term impact of greenhouse gas emissions that warm our climate. Ameren needs to come up with a long-term plan. We can wait no longer for this plan. I also spoke at a commission hearing in 2018, pre-COVID, on the same things, and I feel like we're just in the same program here. We are number two now. We used to be three in 2018, after Indiana and Texas. Now we're number two, only after Texas, in burning coal for energy production. We are not even a coal-producing state. In 2021 alone, Ameren spent nearly $500 million to import coal from other states. We need to move to cheaper, cleaner energy like wind and solar. An added bonus would be job creation for our communities, which would additionally boost our economy. Our state's utilities, including Ameren, could also take advantage of the benefits in the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed last session in the US Congress. It makes it cheaper for us to retire coal and move to wind and solar with improved storage, which that's needed, of course, because we don't always have sun, and we don't always have wind, but with improved battery storage, which is out there and available, and other clean energy options. It's hard. It's not easy for change, but we can do it, and I don't know why we're waiting. It's hard, but it's rewarding work that could be done by Ameren, by our public utilities commissions, our state legislators, and the governor. It would benefit all of us. From the US Energy Information Administration 2021 data, coal still accounts for greater than 70% of in-state generation in only four states in the US. West Virginia is number one at 91%. Missouri is number two. 75% of our energy generation is from coal. Right behind us is Wyoming at 74 and Kentucky at 71. This is not a group of people or a group of states that we should be proud of being part of. It's awful, something that we should all be disgusted with at this point in time. Many of our neighboring Midwest states have transitioned to cleaner energy, and it costs less. For example, Iowa and Kansas, both of those states, wind is now their primary energy source for in-state electricity generation after overtaking coal in 2019. We can do this. Other states have done it. In Iowa, in 2021, 58% of their total electricity came from wind. In Kansas, 43%. Perhaps most importantly, in 2021, the cost of electricity in Iowa is less than the cost in Missouri. Iowa, it's 9.13 cent per kilowatt hour versus Missouri at 9.85 cent per kilowatt hour. Instead of raising rates, Ameren needs to retire their coal plants and transition to cleaner energy generation. Now is the time. It's not time to raise the rates. We live in the "show me" state. I'm not from Missouri originally, but I always love that term, "show me" state. We've been shown. Now is the time. No more waiting. Clean technologies pay for themselves over time through higher efficiency and lower fuel costs. Sunshine and wind is free. By slowing climate change and lessening extreme weather disasters, they also yield trillions of dollars in avoided climate damages. Those benefits are long-term, but there are immediate health benefits that we would have through cleaner air, yielding longer, healthier lives for Missouri citizens, neighboring state citizens, and US and global citizens as well. Cleaner air, if we met the America's Paris target points, we would avoid 4.5 million premature deaths, 1.4 million hospitalizations and emergency room visits, this is in the United States, 300 million lost workdays, 1.7 million incidences of dementia, and 440 million tons of crop losses over the next 50 years. This is from data that has been come out, that came out from a large study done at Duke University, I believe it was in 2018. I have the data I can share, and with NASA. Air quality benefits would be realized almost immediately and domestically. Near-term national gains are larger than implementation costs. Health impacts of air pollution, most importantly coal burning especially, include heart attacks, asthma, cancer, unhealthy birth, like premature births and problems with birth rates and birth children being born dead, and leads to tens of thousands of deaths in the US each year. Transitioning to a clean energy economy will make us healthier and save money immediately. Switching to 100% clean renewable energy is one of the best things we can do to let every Missouri resident breathe clean air and to stop the toll of dirty energy on our health. So let's roll up our sleeves, put in the work, and make this happen. I hope I'm not speaking at another hearing three to four years from now. Quite frankly, if I didn't have family ties here and everything else, I would not live in Missouri, because we're so far behind. It's really sad. Now is the time. It's not time to raise rates. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the, do you know the name of that Duke study?
I have it. Yeah, it's on my, exactly, for sure. Have it here, but it's really written small, so. It was with the Goddard Institute at NASA and Duke University. I have it on my laptop. I apologize, I walked away from the.
If you want to go get it, I'll wait.
Sure. Sure.
If you would like to, if you would, if you would like to make further comments, as I indicated before, at the end of the hearing, I'm going to, I'm going to say how that can be done, if you did want to. If you had a statement with you today that you wanted me to admit into evidence as part of the record of this hearing, I would be happy to do so.
I have it electronically. I could give that to you, or I don't know if they have a printer available, but I have it. If you want that, I have it right here.
You could send that to public counsel?
Certainly, I'm not sure you want to handle it in terms of making it an exhibit. I mean, how?
Well, I can just submit it.
What are you thinking mechanically? Because she's, as I understand it, interested in making it a part of the commission's record.
Well, as, as part of the record of the local public hearing, what I allowed somebody at a previous hearing to do is to, is they'd send it to Ms. Van Gerpen, and Ms. Van Gerpen sent it on to me, and I just marked it as an exhibit for this hearing.
Whatever process you'd like to employ, I'm okay with.
Okay. So it was researchers at Duke University and NASA Goddard Institute for Space Studies. They modeled the health benefits from reduced pollution from reducing emissions, U.S. emissions at a pace consistent with limiting global warming to 2 degrees C emissions, this is the title, Emissions Reductions from the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. That was a, that was a bill that was, it's.
You're going, you're going a little faster than I could write.
Oh, sorry.
Emission.
It was Emissions Reductions from the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. It was from the last Congress. So, you know, we have a new Congress in the U.S. now, so this bill will have to be reintroduced, but this is regarding that bill. And it basically, it was in nature, nature, climate, and let me see if I have that. I have the link here. I don't know if I have.
Why don't we do that?
Service here.
And it seems, it seems, Mr. Williams has indicated, and I can see that this is a little awkward, why don't I have you send it to the email address pscinfo@psemo.gov?
Okay, sure.
And we'll have that submitted as a comment, as an additional comment, rather than, rather than an exhibit, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Judge, what I've seen done in the past is when an exhibit's offered, if parties, I guess it would be offered to the commission, then if any party wants to object to it, they can make their objections regarding it. I don't anticipate making any, but I don't, I'm not opposed to it being made a part of the record whatsoever. It's purely the mechanics of how to get it there, and I would prefer, frankly, that it be part of the record as opposed to a comment.
So if I wasn't able to be here in person today, I was going to be able to submit a statement, correct?
Correct.
I can put it within that statement, pretty, you know, what I said verbatim today and include the reference for that study. It's just a research paper that was in nature.
That's your preference. Would you like to, would you like to include that as part of a separate comment, or would you like me to take that as an exhibit in today's hearing?
Oh, whichever is easier.
I don't think it's a matter of.
Since I'm here, probably that, probably the second choice.
Okay. Are there any objections to her offering that as an exhibit for this, purposes of this local public hearing?
It's difficult without having the exhibit in front of me. Not having seen it to make a determination on whether there is any objectional material. So I.
And I understand that you can't see it, but I haven't treated these things in the same manner that I've treated evidentiary hearings. And in evidentiary hearings, Mr. Williams is absolutely right. Normally, what I would do is ask all the parties if they had an objection, but in these, these local public hearings, what I've generally done is allowed them to submit it as an exhibit, and the commission has given it whatever weight they felt was appropriate since local public hearings are.
Judge, I've also seen a process where it's been admitted subject to any objections parties want to make within, I don't know, say 10 days afterward.
Yes, and I could agree to that as well. And also, I think the, the concern I would have would be the, the exhibit would be offered, and there'd be no opportunity to ask any further questions, but the commission, as long as they know that that's subject to that and gives it the weight that it's, under those conditions, I don't think there is a concern, as long as we have that procedural mechanism.
Are you, are, can we go off the record for a moment? And if anybody wonders what I'm doing, I'm taking a moment to think. Mr. Williams, would you be willing to take that exhibit and forward it on to us?
Most certainly.
Okay. Let's go back on the record. Okay, here's what I think I would like you to do. If you would like to include that statement as an exhibit for part, for this local public hearing, I am going to mark that as, when I receive it, as local public hearing exhibit If you'll get that information to Mr. Williams here with the Office of the Public Counsel, he will forward it on to me. It will be attached to the transcript. I will, no, prior to attaching it to the transcript, I will forward it to the parties for objections, and I will give 10 days for objections to that before attaching it to the transcript, or not attaching it if those objections are sustained. Okay?
Sounds good. So is it Mr. William? I'll get your card. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Host. Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Moore? Mike Sorensen, saying that right? Is there a Mike, is there a Mike who wanted to make a comment? Because I know I'm getting his first name right. I'll skip over that for now. Laura Guidry? You want to pass for now? Okay. For today? Okay, so you don't want to offer a comment today? All right. It's G-U-I-D-R-Y. Mr. Wallace, would you say and spell your name for the record?
I will. William Wallace, W-I-L-L-I-A-M, Wallace, W-A-L-L-A-C-E.
And would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
I do.
And what comments do you have for the commission today?
Well, first of all, thank you for this opportunity. As mentioned, my name is William Wallace, and I am the Executive Director and President of Missouri Veterans Endeavor, or MOVE. We are a long-term supportive and permanent housing community for homeless veterans and their family members located in St. Louis County. Our mission is to provide at-risk and homeless veterans and their families with housing, the ability to overcome barriers, and the hope that they need to achieve a better future. I'm also a former Missouri Veterans Commissioner and serve on the Executive Committee of the St. Louis County Continuum of Care of Homeless Service Providers. So in speaking today primarily for our veteran clients, I'm also speaking for our neighbors across the region who are experiencing homelessness. The primary barrier to permanent housing that all our veterans and neighbors have is financial instability. The causal effects of this instability include temporary or ongoing low income, poor credit, accumulating debt, equity disparity, and a lack of resources particular to their needs. One debt that literally all of our homeless veterans have is utility debt, and primarily with Ameren. Utility debt is a huge barrier to securing and maintaining permanent housing. Literally, 95% of the homeless veterans and their family members referred to our organization come with utility debt, which is often insurmountable. The fact of the matter is, for a person or head of household to enter into a lease or secure a mortgage, they must be able to have utilities placed in their own names. This is very much the case for our veteran clients. In the past two and a half years, we have seen a market increase in the number of veterans and their families and our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness in the St. Louis region. We work with our Continuum of Care of Homeless Service Providers, our homeless veteran service provider peers, and with particular to us, our St. Louis VA on managing what is called the by-name list for the veterans. Of all the veterans we have outreach to and identifying as being homeless, we try to move those veterans into programs and ultimately into permanent housing. As of last week, we had 304 veterans on our list, an increase of over 30% from a year ago, and 25 to 20%, 20 to 25% increase from last summer. What is most alarming is that 93 of those veterans are unsheltered. They're living on the streets, or they're bouncing from one spot to the next. And this is just for the veterans that we know by name on our list. This is a huge public health issue, and with the continuing uncertainty of COVID, extreme weather events such as we have experienced over the holidays and last summer, our veterans and our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness are in a public health crisis that affects our entire region. I wish to make note that Ameren has disconnected 53,100 customers from January until September of 2022, and that, that number represents meters, but not people. So the impact of these connections is greater than the total number of disconnections that are being counted. We are asking again that Ameren not increase their rates and that they again work with our community of homeless service provider peers to develop cogent plans to address, to address the crisis that we are in. In the past, we have asked for their partnership in working with our homeless veterans and collective clients to help them become good consumers of the Ameren product. We have asked for ways to address debt, such as reasonable payment plans crafted to the financial needs of the client or the neighbor, simplified processes and plans that are easy for a person or their case manager, in our case, to negotiate, simplified and consistent debt relief program applications, customer service representatives who can engage with specific clients, neighbors, or their case managers in a consistent and timely manner with follow-up, specific outreach to underserved communities and community advocates, and creative ways to pay off this debt. We had approached Ameren a number of years ago, going back six years ago, and suggested these very things. And after that initial agreement and even excitement, it very quickly waned. The communication and plans diminished, and sadly, to this point today, where communication between Ameren, our organizations, and our peers in homeless service provision in the St. Louis region has really ceased to exist. As a veteran myself, I'm very fortunate to have had a wonderful supportive network of family, friends, and a community that embraced me when I returned from the war I deployed to and at my discharge. But for my veteran peers and our neighbors in the St. Louis region who are less fortunate than I, I would hope that Ameren would join us and embrace many avenues to reduce rates, treat debt, engage marginalized communities, and help end homelessness in the St. Louis region and beyond. I thank you for your time and attention and my thoughts and our collective concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. You mentioned a number that I heard one other time during this hearing, 53,100 disconnections since, and, and you had set a date there, but I didn't catch it.
I did. That date was between January 2022 and September of 2022.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Lehman?
I also have a letter from the, I'm part of a community and, but I also have a letter from the HOA regarding the rate increase. Does that have to be dealt with separately by submitting it online?
No, if you've got that.
It's short.
If you've got it on, you've got a couple of options here. You can choose to read it into the record, you can choose to let the parties here look at it, and I will take objections and then rule on whether or not it can come into evidence.
And I have my own testimony, I have my own testimony, so I could read my testimony first, and how do you, how do you want to handle the HOA?
Well, if you'd like, if you'd like me to attach that letter, or if you'd like that letter to become an exhibit, if you could bring it up here for just a moment.
Sure.
Would you hand it first to Ms. And since you've got another copy, would you hand it to this table for them to look
And that was written by Mike Wallace, and Mike Wallace couldn't make it, but he knew what was coming up here.
Okay. Any objections to admitting that as an exhibit onto the local public hearing record?
No objection.
Any objections from staff or public counsel? Okay, I will not be sending out a, yes, you can have that. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. VanderGift.
Judge, public counsel also would not object to Mr. Lehman's written statement that he intends to read either, for that matter.
If you want to submit that, again, I'm going to ask you to give it to Ms. Moore, the attorney for Ameren. Absolutely, Ms. Anyway, as I was saying, in regards to the HOA letter, I'm going to mark that as local public, public hearing exhibit two for this hearing, and I'll call it the HOA letter, and that will be admitted on to the hearing record. Now, in regards to what I'm going to choose to call exhibit three, are there any objections to admitting that on to the local public hearing record? Ms. Moore? Yes? It would, but I think Mr. Williams had indicated he also wanted to know if it could be. It would, but I think Mr. Williams had indicated he also wanted to know if it could be attached to the record as an exhibit. Do you have any objections to that?
No, Your Honor.
Any objections from staff or public counsel? I will call, and Layman, right?
Yes, sir.
I will call exhibit three. Mr. Layman's.
And you have my spelling there, on the bottom.
Okay, exhibit three, Mr. Layman's statement will be admitted on to the hearing record. At this time, Mr. Layman, if you would like to go ahead, and did you, did I, I don't believe I swore you in yet, so. And would you spell your name for the hearing record?
Sure. It's Jonathan, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N. Last name is L-E-H-M-A-N-N.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Should I be started with mine or the HOA?
You, you may start with whatever you, whichever one you like. I, I'm not going to tell you how to testify. You get to, you get to offer comments the way you would like.
Okay. I'll start with the HOA. So this was written by Mike Wallace, who's the treasurer for the community that we're in. Dear Missouri Public Service Commissioners, on behalf of nearly 155 property owners from the Lakewood Hills subdivision located in northern Jefferson County, Missouri, we respectfully requesting that the Missouri Public Service Commission reject Amarin Electricity's proposed $12 a month rate increase per line charge. Many of the owners in our subdivision are living off of fixed incomes, and even though this proposed increase seems like a small amount, it represents a 6% annual jump for the average bill. If annualized, this represents an additional 144 per year out-of-pocket expense to people who may not have the resource to pay the extra amount. In the bigger picture, this means all of the owners in our subdivision collectively will be paying an extra $22,320 annually. We need to protect financially vulnerable citizens from this unreasonable increase, and respectfully ask for your help. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you, Mike Wallace, Treasurer of Lakewood Hills Homeowners Association. Now to mine. Dear Commissioners, I am a homeowner, sorry, I am a homeowner with an all-electric house located in Lakewood Hills subdivision in northwestern Jefferson County. I have a small income from my business in graphic design and communication, and along with my partner's earnings from her job, we are able to pay our bills, but it can be tough sometimes. I ask the Missouri Public Service Commission to please reject Amarin Missouri's proposed $12 a month rate increase per line. The increase is a flat rate. Everyone pays the same amount. This will impact lower and fixed-income households the most, and we have a lot of neighbors in that category in our community. I feel, I feel the flat rate increase request is insensitive and untimely. We have no access to natural gas where we live, nor would we want it. While we accept that our largest utility bill each month is from Amarin, we would feel much better if Amarin were working much faster and harder to bring renewable energy generation onboard. Currently, Amarin is still one of the most dependent uses of coal for electric generation among the nation's electric utilities. I've realized that the Rush Island Power Plant in Jefferson County is closing due to Amarin's insistence that scrubbers were not needed when EPA said that they were. Amarin needs to do what it claims it will do and replace the lost power with renewable energy and electric storage. I believe we are at the beginning of a climate change crisis that will only be best, at best abated, if we dramatically reduce our carbon emissions now. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. Feel free to contact me with any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Layman.
Mr. Layman, I do have a question.
Sure.
You said you're an all-electric user. What did you mean by that?
We don't have spire, other gas, we don't have natural gas pipelines in our area or anywhere near it. So when I say all-electric, when the power goes down, there's nothing there except maybe some firewood.
Well, yeah, let me ask it this way. Are you using electricity for space heating and cooling then?
No. Just, my wife uses a heating pad. I don't think that counts, but minimally.
How do, how do you heat your home?
It's through an electric heater that looks very similar to a furnace. It's in the basement, and it...
Forced, forced air?
It's forced air. And it uses, and this is new to me, it uses the actual exterior unit, which is normally thought of as a compressor for the air conditioning. It actually uses that too as the heat exchange. So it may be a heat pump in there. I can supply some information on that. It was put in by Future Air, by the prior homeowners.
But the bottom line is electricity that powers your space heating and your space cooling?
We don't use space heaters, as I said.
No, I don't mean...
We have a furnace that uses electricity and only electricity.
Thank you.
All of your heating and cooling comes from electricity, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Layman. Thank you again for your statement.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Layman is the last person I have signed up to speak at this point. At this time, is there anybody who, having heard everybody else speak, would like to offer comments to the commission? Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone.
Yes, my name is Donald, D-O-N-A-L-D, last name O-T-E-R-S-E-N.
O...
O-T-T as in Tom, E-R-S-E-N. I wasn't going to come here today, and I decided I would, and what I, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give at this local public hearing is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I wasn't going to come here today, and then I thought about it. I live here in town. I've heard about the coal mining. I came from southern Illinois. My hometown was called Willisville. Right now, it's 650 people. It was a very, very large town. We had coal mining. The reason you do not see coal in Portisessou or anywhere else around here is because it had high sulfur. All the coal mines around here are probably getting all their coal from Wyoming. I lived out in Portisessou. When they built that plant out there, I was totally against it with Amarin UE. Why? Because what they have out there is a sewer. You go out there, it's the leftover from the luts. The water and minerals and everything that's in coal is in a great big container. Supposedly, it's got rubber underneath it. The question that I have, Amarin UE, is if you have an earthquake, which we're on the Madrid Fault here, if you have an earthquake and it comes up the Mississippi River, that is going to burst, and you're going to have this contamination everywhere. And it is contamination. I don't know how to explain it. I don't, I wish they would go total electric, other means of electricity, because it's a, the coal mining industry is a mess, and a lot of people lost their jobs over it, had to go everywhere else. But it's, I mean, I cannot see paying that much money to go there. My next question to Amarin UE would be, what are you going to do with the electric cars that you think that's going to be going, what's your grid going to be for that? I cannot see replacing all the electric in everybody's homes and industries, and then what you going to charge the people for that? It's not going to be $12. And I guess that's something to think on, because sooner or later, everybody says I'm going to have to go electric. I'm, I'm 77 years old. I don't plan on being around to go to your total electric. I can see gasoline being used, yeah. You're going to, what are you going to do with the vehicles? You're going to have to get rid of your vehicles. Now, they're in Coaterville, Illinois, C-O-U-L-T-E-R-V-I-L-L-E, Illinois. There are solar farms out there. Farmers have gave up their property. I'm talking hundreds of acres. And the way I understand it, the way it was explained to me, your electric cars have been around already, and your electric vehicles, these companies buy these electric batteries, store them in a great big building, the sun comes down, hits the grid of solar panels, goes into these batteries, it recharges them, and then that's how you get your electricity. I don't know, I don't, I'm no, I don't know all about it, but I've seen it. It is amazing to see farmland, which was for cows, chickens, and whatever, homes, they gave all this up for the money to put all this out. And there are hundreds of them everywhere. It's around Sparta, Coaterville area, and it's worth to see, and if that's the way it's going to go, I guess that's the way it's going to go. But I can't see Amarin UE putting all, what are you going to do here? Where are you going to park your cars at here and get them charged here in St. Charles? There's not that many places. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to offer comments to the commission at this local public hearing? Okay, I see no hands. I'd like to thank everybody who came today to participate in this local public hearing. The commission appreciates hearing from you. I learn something new every time I, I am at a local public hearing. Now, if you have additional comments, or someone you are talking to, I believe somebody indicated that they'd received a bunch of responses on Facebook. If you have somebody who would like to make additional comments, but was unable to be here or attend one of the other public hearings, you can make written comments by contacting the email address PSCinfo, that's PSC stands for Public Service Commission, PSCinfo@psc.mo.gov, by contacting the Office of the Public Counsel, that's Mr. Williams over here. They've been very gracious about seeing that those comments get filed with the commission, or by going to the commission's webpage. The Public Service Commission has a webpage, and on that webpage, you can find a link to leave comments about this case. You may need to know the case number for the case, and the case number for this case is ER-2022, which was the year it was filed in, and 0337. With that in mind, again, I'd like to thank everybody. This has been a long and informative hearing, and I've appreciated everybody taking the time to participate. Have a safe drive home, and this hearing is now adjourned. We are off the record.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Holsman.